Good evening. Thank you for coming to the April 27th City Commission meeting. Appreciate your being here this evening. And if you could all stand, we'll salute the flag.
I'd like to lead just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Thorpe, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Your Honor. Commissioner Baldini?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Kimbenzi? Commissioner Connolly?
Here.
Commissioner Fraser?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Mayor Protem Campana? And Mayor Coin?
Here. Is there a motion to excuse Commissioners Campana and Kimbenzi?
Make a motion to excuse Campana and Kimbenzi.
Is there support? Support? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All right, that motion passes. Is there anyone who wishes to make a motion to change the agenda in any way? Seeing none, a motion to approve the agenda would be appropriate. Commissioner Baldini?
So moved.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Thank you. That passes. The agenda is approved. Next announcements, I only have two announcements. One, the Beautification Committee kindly gave us some lovely tulips to beautify the Commission chamber, so thank you very much for that. Appreciate it. And you continue to do a good job, as you will do this spring, I'm sure. The other is, we are really making very good progress on getting people to volunteer for committees and boards. We're down to one page now, and we have really done very well. In next meeting, we're going to have a presentation by the committee, who we asked to develop a strategy to get more people to step up and volunteer. And we have almost 200 people that do serve on boards and commissions, which really make this community work, so, on advisory board. So, please consult the Internet and our website, and look at openings. There are many, and we'd love to have you join us. Now, the next item on the agenda is boards and committees. I want to welcome two board, two members. If you could come up to the podium there, Erin Andrews and Tammy Dawodowski. Could you come up here, please? Tammy, if you could come forward here. I wanted to be sure that I put you on the right committee, okay? So I had to go back and get my list. You're going to be on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. And you, I believe, are the chairperson of the Beautification Committee as well.
I'm the president.
Yes. And thank you for the flowers, and we're going to give you a button.
Lovely.
And we really appreciate you stepping forward and doing this. Do you have any words you would like to say, or anything?
Well, I am very honored to serve. I hope I do a good job. It's a new venture for me, so hopefully I will match all of your anticipations for me. And so, we'll see how it goes.
Thank you. And you've done a really great job on the Beautification Committee, so I know you will also with this one. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And Erin, I'm glad you came today, because this shows the barriers that this city needs to kind of overcome, because I don't think this will reach for you to speak. But you're going to be appointed to the Planning Commission. Greatly appreciate that. It's a very important committee. And again, thanks for being willing to serve. And I'm going to give you this for your service, and good luck. Thank you. Okay. Yeah, thanks. Okay. Sarah. Just ignore Sarah.
For good cause.
Can I ask that Sergeant in Arms, we marked her absent, can we just record in the minutes that she's now present, is absent late for a good cause, which she'll discuss later? Okay. All right. Appointments. We're going to, we have two appointments here to make. Philip Watts to the Presque Isle Advisory Committee for a term ending April 1st, 2018, and Robert Kulusek to the Planning Commission for a term ending 2017, February 15th. Is there such a motion to approve them, their appointments? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that we appoint Philip Watts to the Presque Isle Parks Advisory Committee for a term ending April 1st, 2018, and Bob Kulusek to the Planning Commission for a term ending February 15th, 2017.
Thank you. Commissioner Fraser?
So I do.
Any further discussion?
Nothing further.
Seeing none, all those in favor of those appointments, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, okay? Those people were thus appointed to those respective committees. The next item is a presentation by myself on the Commission's visit to Duke LifePoint Headquarters in Brentwood, Tennessee. And with, in addition to my reporting, I would like Commissioner Fraser and Commissioner Reynolds to listen carefully to my comments, because I'll probably forget something. If you then be kind enough to step forward and fill in what I left out. I would say this, first of all, it's a pleasure to be able to report to the Commissioners and to the community. We were in Brentwood for a total of about 28 hours, about two of which we had to ourselves, because we were very busy. It was an extremely successful trip for both us, meaning representing the city, and for Duke LifePoint. And I think it was a very worthwhile thing to do. Eye to eye, face to face, getting to meet over 30 people involved in the projected new hospital, six or seven vice presidents and members of the Board of Duke LifePoint. Accompanying, unbeknownst to us, were two members of the hospital advisory board here, along with the chief executive officer and the chief medical officer. We did not know they were going to be there. So we met with them, and very successful meeting. I just have to digress for one minute. I had never been to the Nashville Airport, and I got off the plane and was kind of wandering around, looking, going to get a rental car with the four of us. And I heard the words that doctors hate to hear, "Is there a doctor around?" And then all sorts of alarms went off, lights blinking, and people running around. And I'm sure Dr. Connolly can sympathize with, you know, "Oh, boy, what's this going..." And then three fingers pointed, "He's a doctor." And so then everybody, the whole airport, looked at me, and come to find out, I was just about ready to get on the escalator, and at the very bottom of the escalator, an elderly woman had fallen. And the, you know, your worst nightmares on an escalator, if you fall, right when the escalator gets to the bottom, you figure you're going to look like baloney. Well, this lady did exactly that, and fell right there, and had four big lacerations on her face and her arm, and was really bleeding, and was, looked like a pretzel. She was all, like, tied up. Her arms were behind her, and her leg was all ripped around. So there I was, and this has nothing to do with visiting Duke LifePoint, but it's kind of an interesting, you know, as Johnny DePietro would say, "I'm the mayor, and I'm going to tell this story." So, you know, it's a very difficult situation to be in. So she was very, very embarrassed, first of all, and was bleeding all over. And so I said, you know, "Are you okay?" And I, "Okay." And then we moved this leg and this leg, and got that arm untangled, and got her bleeding relatively controlled, because facial cuts are just horrible bleeders. And got that all tamped down, and stood her up. And she said, "Oh, I really appreciate your help. Thank you so much." And then gave me this big hug. So I had now blood all over me. You know, it's like, you could see this lady coming at you, like, "Shake my hand or do something," but a big hug. So that was kind of an unusual way to start off my visit to Nashville. But in meeting, the first thing we did was, we toured their headquarters, which we wanted to see. And I had mentioned at our previous meeting that I wanted to make sure that it wasn't in a strip mall, and, you know, an office of 400 square feet with three people in it. And I tell you, it was a spectacular building. It was in a strip mall, though, behind a strip mall, but the building was, I think, eight stories high, beautiful, well-done. The person who showed us the building is the individual with Duke LifePoint who is responsible for building this hospital. So this kind of gives you an idea of the quality that they have in mind, and it was spectacular. We then went to dinner with the advisory committee, advisory board of the hospital members, and Ed, and a couple people from Duke LifePoint. Very worthwhile dinner. And then the next morning, met with these 30 people, including the architectural firm, the construction firm, the building, the construction management firm, interior decorators, and community, and publicity department. And surprisingly, and this really surprised me, because everybody has a suspicion that the five of us, or just me, know everything that's going on. I know nothing was going on. I don't know what, where the purchase agreement status is, I don't know what's in the purchase agreement, and I don't know anything about what the building was going to look like. Surprisingly, they have spent a year and a half doing plans on different departments, you know, the surgical suite, the urology floor, the lab, blah, blah, blah. It took them a year and a half to get all that functional blueprints down. And then they had to then, there's a saying, "Form follows function." They had to get these blueprints, and then figure out where this went on the property, and what it would look like. And what surprised all of us was, all the people there, other than the architectural firm and the construction firm, had never seen any of this. The vice presidents, it was all new to them. So it was new to us. And that's why they wanted us to be there at that time. They saw it, we saw it, we had an opportunity to make some comments. And we compared, compared to the comments that were made by the executives, were few on our part, because they had not seen it, and they had lots of questions and ideas and thoughts, and positives and negatives. So to sum it all up, they did have an overview of where the property, where the hospital is going to be on the Brownfield site. It's going to be 600 feet long, which is, and they had a comparison to that, if you took the 100 block of Washington Street and added the County Courthouse and the Savings Bank Building, and lined them all up, that's how long this building is going to be. And it's going to be eight stories high, and 500,000 square feet, an 80,000 square-foot medical office building, a three-story garage. And that's what we saw, in sort of an early sketch of what it might look like, with some ideas, and they aren't ready to share that. So in fairness, even the administrators there had, that was the first time they had seen that. In the afternoon, I think the most important part of the meeting, in addition to just seeing what this might look like, and where it was going to be, and listen to their ideas, is the vice president of Duke LifePoint, in charge of this project, said, started off the afternoon after lunch, saying, "We need your help. We recognize that we need to do a better job communicating to the community, and we'd like your input as to how to do that." Well, fortunately, we had some thoughts, and we shared that with them. And the thoughts were as follows. And it's just a coincidence, perhaps, that the president of the advisory committee of the hospital was there. We suggested that this is not our hospital, meaning it's not the city's hospital, it's not people owning it, like Marquette General was a community hospital. This is a for-profit hospital owned by a large company. It's their hospital, and they have to be the people who share information in a prudent manner. And because they have spent a year and a half trying to figure out what they're going to do, everybody has all kinds of rumors and thoughts, including me. And they need to, we felt, have the hospital board meet regularly, a couple times a month, in an open forum with the community, to listen, most importantly, and we underlined word "listen," and to share what's happening, what's up. They liked that idea, and Judy Watson Olsen, who is the president of that board, said, "I'll do that. I want to do that. That's important." The other idea they had was to, which I think is a very good idea, is to establish a website to keep up-to-date the community on what's going on, rather than rumors, 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 or suspicions of people knowing everything that's going on, and that's just not the case. This way, everybody will know the same thing, and that's a very good idea. So I felt that that was probably the most valuable thing of this meeting, in addition to us getting to know who the people are that are actually doing this, and staying with them, have them, have us be people to them, rather than just names. And so I think it was very worthwhile to go and to learn what's happening and why. And I welcome, Commissioner Reynolds, do you have, what did I miss?
Well, I wrote a whole three-page thing, and you did that in probably one page, so I don't think I need to add all of my stuff, because it was, mine's just more detailed. But the only thing that, in that, the part where you said it was the most important part of the trip, which it was, sitting down with them and talking about how to communicate with the community better. Another part that was brought up, that I thought would be good for us as a commission, is that we talked about them coming to our commission meetings and giving updates more often that way. So as a commission, we're more well-informed, but also there's still the public that gets to see those things that are going on. So that's the only thing that I think there was.
Thank you. Commissioner Fraser, anything I missed, if you can think of?
I hear you, Sarah. We did point out to them that they can kind of develop a system to bring the information to the public via commission meetings, private meetings, to the public, public forums, so forth and so on. And the hospital board will help them with that. They did say, like you mentioned, they've been working on this for a while, and they're trying to design this building from the inside out, to make sure it doesn't just draw out a building and try and stick everything in there. So they're working hard on that. And we did notice that the communication department, the person that's in charge of all this stuff, was sitting right next to the mayor the whole time, and she took about two pages of notes, along with the president of the Eastern Hospitals Division was sitting there. And so I think it was very informative, and I think they've got to, they recognize now they have a void, and they're going to work very hard to try and close that void, and get as much information out there as possible. We did mention that there's a lot of concern over the old hospital, and, you know, they said they're not really sure what's going on with that yet. Obviously, this project is going to be at least two or three years in the making, so once that's completed, they have some ideas, but until, you know, everything gets up and running, they don't really know. But they had some ideas, you know, there's, they even talked about maybe creating some more park space over there, even some space for more homes, so they're not going to let it just sit there, but, you know, that's going to be their decision when it's time. So moreover, I think it was a great trip.
Thank you. One other thing, they have not purchased the property as yet. None of us have seen the purchase agreement. It's going back and forth between attorneys. And then when it does get attorney-approved on both sides, they will submit it to the commission for our discussion and vote. And I believe it's not unfair to say, I doubt that this will be under construction per se until a year from now. That's my understanding. They might begin to do work on the dirt and stuff that needs remediation, but they are not going to do that until the purchase is finalized, in my understanding. So that's what we know, okay? And that's what we learned, and I'm glad we went. Any Commissioners, any other comments that have? Okay, thank you. I hope that wasn't too lengthy, but it was important, and we promised you to give a report of what we did. So, thank you. The next item is item number four, the UP Health System check presentation to the Peter White Public Library by Jim Bogan, Marquette President of UP Health System, and Ed Banos, the CEO of UP Health System, Marquette, and Dr. Bill Short, UP Health System, Marquette Board Member. So could you folks come up to that podium right there? Pam, could you come up and join them?
The whole board's coming.
Oh, the whole board? All right.
I'm going to make a couple of comments before we actually hand over the check, just some high points to what we see in our opportunity to be a good corporate citizen. But the UP Health System, which is a group of hospitals, obviously the UP Health System, that's part of LifePoint's organization. But the health system is committed to being a responsible corporate citizen. This means paying taxes and giving back by supporting worthy causes. Just like a community hospital and a strong public school system, a public library is an essential asset to a vibrant community. We are aware of the financial challenges facing the Peter White Public Library. Because of our appreciation for the library, our leadership team decided to make a donation. We believe it's the right thing for the library and our community. As the region's largest employer, UP Health System, Marquette realizes that the Peter White Public Library is a Marquette jewel that greatly enhances the quality of life here in the metro, here in the Marquette area. Our employees, and their families, and the entire community, we serve as a healthcare provider, benefit tremendously from the cultural enrichment that's provided by the library. And we are encouraging others in the area, other companies and other organizations, to consider doing a similar gift as to what UP Health System is doing this evening. And we are very proud to support the Peter White Library. With that, it's our pleasure and honor to present a check for $30,000 to the Peter White Public Library Development Fund.
Peter, you two over here. I'll stand on the end. Hold that aside there. Get in there. Pam, do you want to? And thank you, gentlemen, very much for your gift and your coming tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, Pam, you're next on the agenda for a yearly update on the Peter White Public Library. And Cynthia Prozen, you're going to be there also. Okay, thank you. Thanks for coming.
Do you want to say thank you?
Yeah.
Let me start by saying thank you to the health system. We really appreciate your efforts, and we look forward to merging a strong bond as we move forward. We are here to listen a little bit, and I want to thank you all for coming and listening to our presentation about the public library. I want to confess something before I begin. I don't know if I can do that, but I'm going to do it anyway. I really like this library a lot. I'm Cindy Prozen, I'm a board member, and I hope that's not a conflict of interest. But I really do like the library a lot. When I was a little girl, I went to Peter White Public Library. It was a very different place then than it is right now. But I learned to love the library. I moved away, I came back to Marquette, and I raised my three children here in Marquette. And they learned to love the library, became a part of everything that they did every day. On a Fourth of July parade, when all the other kids are marching with their soccer team, or their Girl Scout unit, or whatever unit they're in, my kids marched strong with the librarians. So we really have a lot of roots with this library, and I really do appreciate it. This is our mission statement, and I'm not going to read the mission statement to you. You have this in your board packet. Anyone who is interested in looking at this PowerPoint, this is on the library website, so you can read it there. But I do want to add two things when I look at the mission statement. We have a materials mission, and the materials mission is, we give you lots of things that you can look at, that you can check out. And everybody knows about the materials mission. We also have a programmatic mission, and that is, we put on a lot of programs. If you ever have nothing to do, and I think that probably most of the people in this room have plenty to do, but if you ever find yourself with nothing to do at night, go to the library, because there is bound to be a program that will be offered, and I'll bet you'll be interested in it. This is our Board of Trustees. We meet like clockwork the third Tuesday of every month at 5:00 in the library. And the members of our board are Diane Patrick, who is our president, who would be doing this, but she is out of town right now, Heidi Gould, who is in the audience, she is our secretary, myself, Jim Jajic, and I don't believe Jim is here, and Patrick Myron, who is also in the audience with us tonight. This is the list of people that work at the library, the administrators and the management. And when I looked at this list of people, I thought, "These are some of the finest people in Marquette. These are some of the most knowledgeable, some of the hardest-working, and go to the library, some of the nicest people you will ever meet." Speaking of nice, we have our fearless leader Pam with us tonight. Pam is very knowledgeable, she is very compassionate and darn, but she is very, very hard-working, and I'm really proud of the work that Pam does on your behalf. Pam holds a couple of meet-the-directors meetings during the month, and I don't know if you've ever done that. If you haven't, and you have something you'd like to say to Pam, please feel free to do that. We learn a lot, as Commissioners, we learn a lot about the things that we're doing right, but we also learn a lot about the things that we might be able to improve a little bit. These are the people that are employed at the library. We currently employ about 38 people, well, exactly 38 people at the library. Look at the last bullet point here. Six of the people that are employees hold a Master in Library and Information Sciences. And for a library our size, that's pretty darn good. We're pretty proud of that. Our number of employees are down just a little bit right now. We're being cautious in these financial times in terms of the number of people that we are employing. Do you know this, we are not just a Marquette library, but our service area is bigger than the city of Marquette. It includes Marquette, Chocle, Marquette, Sands, Scandia, and West Branch Townships, and all of those units contribute to the library by way of a millage. Ewing, Turin, and Wells contribute by way of state aid and penal fines. These are, looking at our statistics a little bit, I'm an old geeky retired person from Northern Michigan University, you know, scientist, and I really like to look at data, I like to look at statistics. We have about 20,000-plus active residence cards. That means that these can be family cards, or they can be individual cards. Let's say you're here for the summer, and you'd really like to have a library card, that's okay with us. You can get a card for three, six, or 12 months, if you are a non-resident. But the catch is, of course, you have to pay a little bit, and you'll pay a prorated amount, that is about what a taxpayer in the city of Marquette would pay. I really like this next bullet point a lot. We have about 350,000 visits a year. Now, think about that for just a second. 350,000 people cross the threshold of the library every year. And if you do a little bit of math, and you divide that by 365, and figure that we're not open every day, we have about 1,000 visits a day, 1,000 visits a day. If you think about nothing else, and you remember nothing else from this presentation, remember that 1,000 people a day visit the Peter White Public Library. Our circulation is about 350,000 items, and that's how many things we check out. Our collection is a little bit in excess of a quarter of a million. Those are the things that you can check out. Pam?
Well, one of the strengths of many public libraries is their storytimes, and we serve children from zero to 18. And we have a number of storytimes that we offer. One of the things that's very popular is the Summer Reading Club, and our Summer Reading Club this summer has a hero, a superheroes theme, and we're looking forward to that. Also with the Summer Reading Clubs, we have tried to work in a science- with the Summer Reading Clubs, we have tried to work in a scientific vent, so that we add in some science, technology, engineering, and math. So, we will be doing that again this year. Primetime Family Reading Time is a grant-funded program that we have done, I think this will be our fifth year. This program was actually started in Louisiana as a way to improve childhood literacy rates. And we are the only library in Michigan's Upper Peninsula that offers primetime family reading. It's been a very successful program for us.
Cat Partners, oh my gosh, how can you not get excited about this program? This is a program that's not just in our library. This is a program where kids come in and they read to dogs. And that sounds kind of silly, but they come in and they read to dogs. If you've ever been there when the dogs come into the library, everybody has big smiles on their face. This is pretty cool. Who knew that dogs were allowed in the library? Not in my day, but they are now. It's a popular program because kids can read to dogs in a totally nonjudgmental fashion. Nobody's saying you're reading too fast, you're reading too slow, you skipped that word, you're not pronouncing it right. The dogs just sit there with little happy smiles on their dog faces and wag their tails, and it's a nice way for kids to read in the library. I'm excited about this next program, our Teen Services. Moms and dads and other people bring their children to the library, and kids get a big dose of the library when they're young. When they turn into teens, we start to lose them. And we don't want to lose them. We're trying to build a group of informed citizens, and we want to kind of hook these kids in. I don't know if you get the Mining Journal, or you looked at the Mining Journal yesterday, but actually, J-Tab was featured in one section of the Mining Journal. These are groups for teenagers to come in and just have fun at the library, maybe have a pizza party, maybe talk about something that they're reading, maybe do some other activity. But these are for, in J-Tab, these are for 5th to 8th graders, and in the Teen Advisory Board, for 9th to 12th graders. And again, it's a way for us to bring these kids into the library, to have them have ownership of the library, and also for us to say, what's on your mind? What could we be doing better?
One of our very, very successful programs was a program that was funded by the American Library Association and the National Endowment for the Humanities. It was Let's Talk About It: Muslim Journeys, Bridging Cultures. We actually provided this program, and we got two different grants for this program, and actually presented programs for almost two years. Many people still tell me how valuable they felt that programming was, and how much it helped them understand the Muslim culture. We also do quite a few author visits, either featuring local authors, books about things that are of interest to people that live in Marquette, in the U.P. And we just had this Teddy Roosevelt in Marquette program about the trial with Teddy Roosevelt. We also have, our film series have grown. It's amazing. We have, I think, six different film series. Everything from low sensory films to children who might be on the autism spectrum, or who have trouble sitting still, to vintage cinema that features old favorites and film classics. It just amazes me that so many people want to come and watch a movie at the library. And I think a lot of it is because they talk about the film afterwards. We also have won a number of awards for our Your Mind Matters programming, which is about mental health. And we are starting Your Mind Matters again in May, so next month. Okay. We also do a number of classes. We do individual computer classes for people. We also have done classes through the Marquette Senior Center. And we've done a couple of programs in cooperation with students at Northern, where they've helped people with their various technology devices. Our various departments, Tech Services does our interlibrary loans, that's sending books and materials that we own, that other libraries don't own, to them. We do almost 20,000 interlibrary loans per year. Our Tech Services Department also men's books, and does all of the cataloging and processing of books. Circulation is those folks at the front desk. They're the ones who check out the books, help steer you in the right direction. Our Reference Department does a great deal. They're located on the second floor, and they're the ones doing those one-on-one computer classes. We also practice exams. We have a number of genealogical programs to teach people about their family history and family trees. And we also are a U.S. Department of State Passport Acceptance Agent. So, you can come in, have us help you with your passport applications, and we send those off to, I believe, Chicago for processing. Okay. The administration works on grants and fundraising. We also publish a quarterly newsletter. We have a Friends Group that has two used book sales per year, and this also includes our website.
So, we also have about almost 100 computers that people can use. And you often think, well, gosh, everybody has a computer at home. Not so. And so, we are able to help people who don't have computers at home. We offer courses in basic computer ideas. We have one-on-one computer help that gets people through issues that they're having with their computers. We have really pretty grounds, and not right now, because it's still kind of the post-winter phase. But in the summer, we have beautiful grounds. The grounds were, the gardens were donated to us by the Huron Mountain Club, and they're for all the citizens to enjoy. They are maintained by volunteers. Here's a plug for the library volunteers. We have a lot of volunteers that work at the library, and they do a really nice job. I like them. You like them. They're really pretty. They're really relaxing. They're really restful. In fact, some people like them so much that they have their wedding photos taken with these gardens as the background. Some people like them so much that when they have a family reunion, they say, let's go to the library gardens and get our photos taken there. Palladino's Cafe, I hope that you have sampled the food at Palladino's. It's really swell. The library leases space to Palladino's. It is currently run by Andrew Seer, and Andrew Seer is a graduate of Northern Michigan University, a university I am very proud of. He is a graduate of the Culinary Arts Program, which is a wonderful program. Andrew prides himself on using local ingredients in his menus. So, if you haven't tried this, gosh, it's a good idea to try this.
And our very final two slides are on our budget, which very shortly we'll be discussing again during city budget hearings. We'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Thank you. Just a comment. Any questions anybody has? Commissioner, Kim Benzey?
I'd just like to thank you, Pam, and certainly your board, for doing such a good job, because I feel like our library does stand out, not only in the Upper Peninsula, but in our whole state. So, thank you for all you do. Just a quick question. I'm interested in the teen programs, because I never really thought that, you know, when you go to the library as a kid, you're fascinated with it, and then you get other interests, and, you know, you're out doing other things. Do you have any teen programs that bridge multi-generational, meaning that the teenagers come in and they work with younger kids, or they actually work with senior citizens to teach them computer skills or anything?
We do, our Teen Advisory Board does a lot of planning for programming for the children and the J-Tab, the Junior Tab. In the past, we've done some computer assistance, but at this point, the group isn't real interested in that. And they get to develop what they want to do. And they're more interested in doing dance, dances, musical events. They're very, Live Clue is very popular. Last year, I think it was, they did a couple of Doctor Who's-type events. So, they pretty much decide what they want to do. But they do really help out with the Summer Reading Club, and they help plan events for the children and the younger teens.
Anyone else? Well, thank you. Just, well, don't leave yet. I have a couple of comments. Cynthia, thank you for your expressed love for the library. I know everyone here probably just loves it just as much as you do, so thank you. And you have a great board, who are very committed and great stewards of this wonderful place, a great staff, as you said, and a pretty good director, too. Okay? And Pam, you do a great job. Thank you very much for all of your efforts, and appreciate the report, and thanks for coming tonight. Appreciate it. Thank you, board members, for coming, and all your work. The next item, the next item on the agenda is a Certificate of Appreciation to the City Clerk, David Blue. Mr. Blue, could you come over to the podium? And Mr. Manager, are you going to do this, too?
I'll stand.
All right. David, it is with a heavy heart that I do this, because you are a great city clerk. And we told you that last meeting, and we're telling it to you again, and we're going to give you another certificate of appreciation. This is on behalf of the whole city community. You've served eight years. You've done a tremendous job. You've worked hard. You were the driving, organizing, keeping-together force for the Charter Commission, which three of us commissioners have served on with you, and you will be missed. And I just wanted to say, at dinner tonight, my wife said, he's really smart, because he's retiring at the beginning of summer, rather than waiting till October. So, you, that's pretty smart. So, we wish you all the best. And, Phil, do you have any comments you would like to make?
Thank you. Of course, Dave, I echo the mayor's thoughts, as coming on board when I did, just about five years ago now. You are one of the most important first contacts I had, and mentors and sounding boards on what to expect stepping into the city. And I know not a lot of people know this, but you have pretty considerable government experience, both appointed and elected, before you decided to take this position. So, having somebody who could be at my side to help steward the city, who's literally been there and seen it all and done it all, was incredibly valuable for me. I know for staff, every day, they get a chance to reinforce that in a lot of different ways, but I just want to say, on a personal note, I really miss you, and it's going to be tough getting along here for a while without you. But we know that, on our next agenda item, that the legacy you're leaving behind is going to help us get through that transition. So, all the best.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The only thing is, I know Chris is going to be up here next for the year, so I think I'll read that from this side.
All right. Now, Commissioner Reynolds has a little gift for you, which I would hope you might see to possibly share. Okay, do you have, would you like to come and give this to him?
Sure. I just baked a bunch of cupcakes, because, well, I baked cupcakes instead of a real cake, because I honestly broke my pan. So, there's a whole bunch of German chocolate cupcakes, and I made them for everybody, so everybody's welcome to them, if you will share, that is. So...
Dave?
There's a whole load of them.
I'll gladly share. I don't think I can eat all of them.
Well, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the swearing-in of the new clerk. Could you come up, please? And Dave, this is your job to do.
Okay. Oh, I think the certificate's for swearing-in right here.
Anyway, I'll start this off by reading the agenda cover for this, the appointment of the new city clerk. Background, the city clerk, Dave Blue, has announced his retirement effective April 30, 2015. In accordance with the city charter, and in recognition of her qualifications and experience, the city manager has appointed Chris M. Hazaras as the next Marquette city clerk, effective May 4, 2015. Ms. Hazaras has worked for the city for over 21 years. The last 12 was deputy city clerk. And in addition to her certification as a state-of-Michigan accredited election official, she is a certified municipal clerk, and a CMMC certified Michigan municipal clerk. She has worked side-by-side with the city clerk through several state and national elections, the recantification of the city code, and the recent revision of the city charter. She has also demonstrated her ability to work well with the city commission, the city attorney, city staff, and the general public. Fiscal effect, the salary for the city clerk is included in the current budget recommendation. Confirm the city manager's appointment of Chris M. Hazaras as city clerk, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Well, commission, is there a motion to approve this and confirm Chris's appointment? Commissioner Baldini?
So...
Okay, is there support? Commissioner Kim Benzey?
Support.
Any discussion? Commissioner Baldini?
Yes, thank you. I had the opportunity to work with Chris over the years, but more specifically in terms of the charter, and what with both Dave and Chris, and also the efficiency of the office. It's there. Whenever people have questions, I always send them to the city clerk, and they usually have an answer, or they know where to send them. And Chris is there, and a great addition, and a great transition. Dave has done a great job of preparing her for this position, and I think the city's going to be well-served.
Commissioner Benzey?
I would say the same thing. And I know when I was in picking up my packet to run again for commission, I asked Chris, I said, geez, have you heard anything? And she said, no, not yet. So, I'm very pleased to see you get it, simply because I feel you are a great fit. You've been working under Dave, and anytime you've been in his shoes up here filling in, you've done an amazing job. So, congratulations.
Any other comments? Commissioner Connolly?
I want to thank Chris for her willingness to step up into this role. She's done a great job, and I'm sure she will continue in her new role as the full clerk. So, thanks again.
Any other comments? Commissioner Frazier?
Thanks for all your hard work, Dave. Enjoy your retirement, and good luck this summer. And you can always come back later, and room for city commission maybe or something. You're in the opposite side, telling everybody else what to do, so good luck.
Mr. Reynolds?
Those cupcakes are for you, too, Chris. Thank you.
Okay, we need to vote. All those in favor of affirming and confirming the city manager's appointment of Chris Hazaras to the position city clerk, say yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That, you are now officially the city clerk, and I ditto everything they said, all those nice things, and I'm really happy for you, and for us, to have you serving. And what's this?
I have to swear in the, uh, I swear at, swear in.
Swear in.
For the city clerk. If you raise your right hand and repeat after me, this is the oath of office for the city clerk of the city of Marquette. And I repeat after me, I, Chris M. Hazaras.
I, Chris M. Hazaras.
solemnly swear.
S solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the state of Michigan.
Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And the charter of the city of Marquette.
And the charter of the city of Marquette.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of city clerk.
Of the office of city clerk.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Tori would tell me that. I'd just like to thank everybody, the commission. I look forward to continuing working. I have some really big shoes to fill, but they're going to be heels now. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The next item on the agenda is public comment. Public comment may not exceed three minutes per person. Please identify yourself by your name and the place of residence in the city or township. And if you wish to reserve time on one of the agenda items, please tell me, and we'll put your name there, and you can speak at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff Ferretto, 350 East Bridge, Marquette, to speak on items nine and 10. These are my opinions. April 13, you offered no reason for Connolly's absence. We need a reason, less any personal details. Also, two of the only six yearly sustainable community meetings were canceled due to lack of a quorum. This illustrates a lack of interest, as well as maybe why we've had such poor luck reducing the city's environmental impact. The board struck a chord on whether the city should preserve our undeveloped parcels. From strongly disagree to strongly agree, the responses were three, two, 14, five, and 27. This result supports my land-use comments, which one critic calls hogwash. He, in effect, routinely insults three-quarters of our public who agree with me, not with him. Your reasons for visiting Brentwood don't properly explain why we couldn't have hosted four officials and met the rest via teleconference. You forbade us the privilege of viewing the early plans together in the city where the hospital will hospital will go. April 13th, Coin and companions said the trip will be all business, not a vacation. A paid vacation is an untrue remark. It's their style to fixate on a word to sway public opinion. Diversion is a better word to make the same point. I loved such diversions during my career, any change of the routine and even two, three hours in a distant place. Coin further insulted me, stating that adjusting the budget is sheer ignorance. Did you so much as ask Vida where we might delay certain big-ticket purchases? You seem content letting only the directly affected agencies suffer. April 13th, you gave another speaker an extra 20 seconds. You're asked again, how much time do you allow so everyone receives equal treatment? There's reason to doubt whether you'd lend equal treatment to certain speakers. Incidentally, what would happen if an enemy of yours threatened you, the equal person at City Hall? April 13th, Kimpenzi mentioned the failure of a single member to attend the tribunal meeting. Coin said three of you were welcoming the first oar boat. That leaves four others, or at least one of the three, to leave the oar dock to attend a function that affected many times more of us than a boat arrival. Regarding the emails, it's fitting the member whose wife is a rower motioned to deny the request. Coin wondered whether the appellant didn't select, why the appellant didn't select a topic, after I just explained why, from the appellant himself, the key word issues, his effort to uncomplicate the request, and the obsolete 1979 ruling. He denied the request, quote, "Based on the mistruth that the request doesn't describe the public record sufficiently to enable the public body to find it. A block of emails is too simple to find to believe," end quote. Does that sound familiar? Now, were you here during that comment or for certain speakers, do you just wait for the three minutes to expire? And in closing, Dave Blue will be missed.
Not here to criticize. Okay. My name's Glenn Van Est, 1402 Kimber. I'm here representing the Women's Center. The Women's Center is in need of a, of a continuous income stream, so there's a project that has been proposed behind the Women's Center building. We were asked to do the site plan for this, and in reviewing it, there just isn't quite enough room. Craig Street, which will be coming up on, on, uh, what do you call it, your consent agenda, I think? Okay? To schedule a public hearing. On the north side of the Women's Center building is an undeveloped street, Craig Street, 50-foot wide right away. And we talked about ways to work around this problem with not quite enough room. Because it is a platted street, anything built there has to meet the setback requirements of 20 feet from the right-of-way line. That really puts a damper on, on what's possible for the Women's Center to, to build back there. So, we came up with the idea of vacating a portion of Craig Street. You will see eventually that the Women's Center owns on both sides of Craig Street, and so it would make all kind of sense for them. Uh, plus, they then will be able to build right up to the right-of-way line. Um, the city would retain an easement over the whole 50 feet for, for utilities. So, the whole point of the thing is to allow the Women's Center to have a larger footprint on a building that they can generate some income from. So, hopefully, you will put that on the agenda and there will be a public hearing and we'll, uh, we'll certainly be able to furnish you with whatever information you may need regarding the vacation of the westerly portion of Craig Street. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. You are Malanquinian 8 Marquette Drive. I want to say publicly, thank you for taking time to go to Tennessee and meet with the people, uh, on the hospital and giving us a incredible report, uh, to let the community know that they are thinking of us, we are thinking of them, and we all need to work together. So, I want to say publicly, thank you. And the city of Marquette is a fabulous place, no matter what anybody else says. Thank you.
Fred Stonehouse, 875 Orianna. Most people know, I think, that I was a commissioner for six years, and I just wanted to remind folks of what a terrific job Dave did as our city clerk. It was, I think, extraordinarily good. Uh, he certainly is a tremendous person, he was a terrific clerk, and he was a very fine gentleman. And that's a combination, I think, that is very hard sometimes to find. He will be missed. And that said, certainly, I think Chris will be doing an exemplary job and I look forward to seeing her operate as the city clerk in her own right. I would point out for the audience, we all know it, I think, in these chambers, but for the audience that may not realize it, we see the city manager, we see city commissioners, we see the fire chief, the police chief, we see our parks and rec guys and community development, but it really is the clerk's office that serves as the glue that keeps that whole shebang moving together. And we almost never see the clerk. But, the job done is just so terrifically important. So, again, thank you, Dave, for your job, well done, and certainly for Chris, uh, my congratulations on being able to, to succeed. I think the best clerk we've ever seen in the Upper Peninsula, at least. Thank you.
Ed Rizak, 317 East Prospect Street. I'm here for the reopening of Lake Shore. I have a business at the entrance to the island. Lake Shore has now been closed for six months and, uh, it's really hit me pretty severely income-wise. Um, I have taxes due and it's hard to pay the taxes when I'm not having any money coming in. I was promised to have signage for the detour round, which hasn't happened. I put up my own signs. Two of them were stolen, one was vandalized. They found one out on Middle Island Point. And every single day that, that the road is closed, my income is, is suffering. So, I encourage the commission to reopen Lake Shore as soon as they can, hopefully by this weekend, which is graduation weekend, is usually a big weekend for me. Thank you.
Tom Aring, City of Marquette Drive, 5 Marquette Drive. I was just wondering if the city has taken up ownership of the Coast Guard property yet, except the old property? They were working on a fair arrangement, trying to get it turned over to the city. Has that happened yet? Just out of curiosity.
Tom, uh, we don't answer questions. This is a time for comment.
Oh, okay.
Perhaps at the end of the meeting, some commissioners may answer, address that question, okay?
All right.
I will. Okay. Anyone else wishing to come forward?
John Di Pietro, 1803 Prescott Island, Marquette. This is my story. Yeah, so anyways, everything that I was going to say, a lot of the people had read it off my sheet and had, came up here earlier and said what I was going to say, but anyways, yes, uh, I got to thank Dave Blue for all the calls that I made to him daily about agenda items and many other things that pertain to the city commission. And thank you very much, Dave. I know you had jet-black hair when you started here, sorry about that. But anyways, I really believe that when you stepped in here, you had already had the experience and you got everything moving along just as smoothly as you could. And with that, you also were a great mentor to Chris because when you were out of town, uh, down in Lansing for the changes of voting rules and that, and she sat in that chair, she ran the meeting just perfect. So, I mean, couldn't ask for a better person to take over this chair. And I know you're going to wake up many times at 2:30 in the morning and say, "Why did I leave?", you know? But I know you, you got fishing and camp on your mind, so, hey, I'm with you there, brother. And one of the other things is that when you leave and Chris takes over, there's not going to be any change in the policy or any difference at all. So, I want to thank you very much for being the mentor that you are for Chris and also for being a mentor for me. Thank you.
Heidi Gould, I reside at 419 North 4th Street. And I am here to strictly speak as a resident of the city of Marquette, as well as one that loves our Peter White Public Library and the community at large. I want to say I greatly appreciate the $30,000 donation from U.P. Health Systems, um, which will make up for the $30,000 that the library had to pay initially, which resulted in a major, uh, budget adjustment, which then resulted in the Sunday closures of the library. And when that announcement was made, it raised some general upset throughout the community, which then resulted in the shedding of light on a major long-term issue of the bigger businesses taking advantage of the dark store theory loophole through the Michigan Tax Tribunal. The library was not the only entity that had to pay money back. Uh, other agencies and entities throughout the community, uh, those who provide senior services, Veterans Affairs Services, our schools, the Iron Ore Heritage Trail, various other entities, also had to pay money back to U.P. Health Systems due to the agreement with the city in, in this big hospital thing that's happening. Um, I would like to encourage those other entities, again, senior services, veterans' affairs, and the schools especially, to also request from U.P. Health Systems a donation similar to the one that we received to help them in their budgets. And in the long term, the Michigan Tax Tribunal and their rulings in favor of big business are going to affect our community greatly. I would encourage all of the individuals and residents of our community to get informed and get involved and to learn more about what is going on to help preserve the integrity of our award-winning community. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to come forward? I'm going to close the public comment section if I don't see anyone else, okay? Public comment is closed. The next item is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Commissioner Connolly?
I move that we, uh, approve the consent agenda as stated.
Commissioner Frazier? Okay, any, just further discussion? Seeing none, although, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Kimpenzi, I didn't see your hand, sorry.
Sorry, I just have a question. I know we already voted on it, but if, if there is a question from a commissioner about some of the, um, I guess the bills payable, they would be... Is there anything you can do to bring that up or no? Probably not, I guess.
Um, well, I don't know. Uh, we, we'll go to our attorney. What, what's your feeling?
And I apologize. So, the, the motion has already passed, is that correct?
No.
The motion has not passed.
The motion has been made to approve the consent agenda, which was adopted to, uh, as part of the agenda. The problem is Commissioner Kimpenzi was not here when that was passed.
Right. I mean, normally that, that, normally that item would have to be removed from the consent agenda at that time. Um, I, I guess I would say with her not being here, if you want to allow that question as part of discussion on the approval of this...
Okay.
Go ahead.
Uh, Commissioner Kimpenzi, would you like to discuss under...
I can bring up in my closing comments, because I don't, what I'm asking is, at the last meeting, I actually voted on the items. Now, looking back at them, I do have some questions about them. That's in the minutes. That's... So, this was, so you're questioning the minutes, not the current bills payable? The previous bills payable. At, at the last meeting. Which were approved at the last minute. I, I would say that that's already been voted on, then, that that should not be discussed at this point.
But you can bring it up in Commissioner's comments.
Yes, correct.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say yes.
Yes.
Okay. Opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Now, we move on to new business, item 15, uh, excuse me, item number nine, which is re-establishing the Waterfront Safety Task Force. Mr. Clerk, could you please read that agenda item?
Yes, Your Honor. On September 1st, 2010, the city appointed a Waterfront Safety Task Force to address community concerns and issues. The original ad hoc committee stood down on September 1, 2011, following, uh, following publication of a final report and recommendations, which, which included periodic reviews for evaluating the effectiveness of ongoing water safety efforts, as well as to address new and developing requirements. Several new and developing issues have arisen in the last four years, including four-season waterfront recreational activities and associated public safety response requirements, new waterfront safety infrastructure and service needs associated with Clark's Park, and ongoing challenges regarding training and retention of water safety personnel. Fiscal effect, none associated with this action. Recommendations will be provided to the city commission in any direction, may be included within future budget deliberations. Recommendation, re-establish the Waterfront Safety Task Force and re-appoint the following original members who have volunteered to serve again. Marquette Fire Department Chief Tom Belt, U.P. Health System Representative Gary Gustafson, Northern Michigan University Representative Eric Smith, uh, Marquette County Administrator Scott Urbish, Mr. Bob Frack, Mr. Mike Horton, Mr. Brian Jensen, and Ms. Carla McCutcheon to the Waterfront Safety Task Force for a period not to exceed 120 days from the day of reappointment. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Mr. Verito, you want us to speak on this item?
Frank Jefferto, 350 East Ridge Marquette, these are my opinions. While we have averted any new drowning on our shores for the past few seasons, the waterfront safety program is not a total success. Concerns arose the last time as to whether the task force members use our beaches. Most are on the committee for professional reasons. What is clear is that those who use our beaches are in the best position to decide what is needed and where. You heard complaints about the high percentage of emphasis that you expended on stretches of beach where no prior problems existed. We ended up with two new lifeguard stands, both of which are leaning lakeward on account of subterranean shifting, one of them after only a single season of use. Initially, the manager told me the stands were seasonal to be removed in September. He later said they were permanent. More recently, he was asked to look into seasonal stands. One idea is to sink a steel basin to the sand in late spring, bolt the enclosure to it, and remove them after Labor Day, along with the buoys and flagpoles. Our lake shore would then appear more natural for nine months instead of the current zero. Our issue is of the overzealous beach cop appears to have been resolved. Consider mandating the task force to better define when police are needed and to assure the presence doesn't pose more of a nuisance than the worth of the security that they are presented, intended to provide. They really only belong there if called by a lifeguard. Aside from preventing injury, the task force's main purview ought to be to retain the low-key ambiance along our lakefront and protection of the resource, most importantly, the dune grasses that hold our beaches together. Without healthy dune grasses, beaches become unattractive. The task force is asked to evaluate not only the ongoing safety efforts, but also the impacts to visual quality and human stresses upon the resource. Previous task force oversights are the poorly located center flagpole and placement of the newest lifeguard stand. The flagpole was anchored smack in the middle of a primary dune, encouraging the trampling of that dune a minimum of twice per day. The evident, the damage is evident for all to see. And the lifeguard stand was erected equidistant between the other two with no regard for the impact of visual quality at that specific point. These are the ramifications of placing people in charge of a beach, some of whom may not frequent the beach. Mandate the task force members to take aesthetics into account to keep them from becoming so fixated on certain aspects of the program that they lose sight of the bigger picture. We live in one of the few most fabulous cities in this country, and these attributes are worth fighting, even dying for.
Uh, commissioners, um, is there a motion regarding this item? Commissioner Connolly?
Uh, I move that the city re-establish the... I move that the city reestablish the Waterfront Safety Committee.
Okay, well, to save you reading all these names, can you just say, make the motion, follow the recommendations of the manager?
In that we follow the recommendations of the manager.
Okay, thank you. All right. Is there support? Commissioner Frazier? Any comments?
Yes, I'd like to thank the committee's past work, and I'm pleased that they didn't just say, "I've done my bit, find somebody else." They did a great job before, and I anticipate they'll do it again, and I'm just, it's just great that everybody stepped up yet again, and they've done a wonderful job. We've not lost a life on that, on those beaches since the task force committee were put into, recommendations were put into effect.
Commissioner Frazier?
I agree with you, Connolly. Look forward to your good work and glad you guys can redo this again. Look forward to keeping up the good work and keep the knowledge out there to keep our beaches safe, so.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Connesey?
I'd like to echo Commissioner Frazier. I think it's, you know, it's widely known, I guess, the difference it's made to have this task force. I know that part of the reason it's coming back together is to look at, you know, what beaches to cover, if we add some more beaches or shoreline. And I guess when it comes back to us, I would like to know the difference, is it a $5,000 difference, is it a $10,000 difference? Because, like it was mentioned, you know, since this task force came together, since there's been the prevention, the plague system, everything, we have not seen that loss of life. So, I guess I would like to know, you know, if it's $10,000 keeping us from it, you know, it might be worth it to the majority of our, of us as commissioners to actually, you know, see this through because it has made a difference. So, thank you.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Well, I echo my other commissioners, and this was established before my time, before I was sitting here on the commission, but I had an opportunity to meet two of these people during one of the city manager's first office hours that I went just to see what that was all about, and it was impressive, just the, I sat down with the one guy, and I can't remember which one it is now, but it was an hour, and he explained everything to me, all the processes they went through and how they established this and how they established this and this, and I just couldn't say anything better than this is just a great program, and I'm glad we're doing this again considering we're getting new beaches.
Thank you. Chief Belt, you've been standing there, do you have any comments?
No, I don't. I'm pleased that we have the same group that originally volunteered, they're making time.
Oh, you guys have done a great job, thank you. Seeing no further questions or comments, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Okay, opposed? That motion passes. Next item, number 10, McCarthy's Cove Restroom Facility Construction.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. The city requested competitive bids on March 13th, 2015, to construct a 320-square-foot year-round restroom facility located at McCarthy's Cove Park. The building is to be masonry construction with wood frame roof and timber trusses. Bids were due on April 6th, 2015. Three licensed contractors submitted bids as follows. AF Construction of Marquette, Klaasner Construction of Marquette, and Primo Construction of Marquette with the bid award to Klaasner Construction. After reviewing the bids, staff recommends proceeding with the award, again, to Klaasner Construction of Marquette, Michigan with a low bid of $127,080. Fiscal effect, the project was approved within the fiscal year 215 budget. The local match will be funded through a general obligation bond issue. Recommendation, award the McCarthy's Cove Restroom Facility Construction Project to Klaasner Construction of Marquette, Michigan for an amount not to exceed $127,080, and direct the city attorney to draft the construction agreement, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Mr. Verto, you wanted to speak on this item?
Frank Jeff Verto, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. In the interest of time, this comment is applicable to McCarthy's Cove, Williams Park, Presque Isle Park, and Harlow Park. A central concern is that each restroom lacks the proper documentation in your agenda supplements from which to construct effective comments. No site plans or renderings are provided other than a vague description of the structure as being masonry with wood frames and timber trusses. The designs seem adequate, but we're not sure of the appearance or of what we're receiving for $404,000 total. Because of the importance of our waterfront and showcase parks, we'd like inclusion in the process, like the commissions of days past, who knew well enough to provide such opportunities without us having to ask. Give us a say in the design and placement of those structures, so long as public grant money is paying for them, and that we'll be the ones living among them and using them. Mr. Vita previously hinted that the McCarthy's Restrooms will go in near the park sign at the parcel's southwest corner, barely northeast of the Michigan Street and Lakeshore intersection. Although I like this idea, I'm not aware of any public opportunity to determine how other beach users feel about that location. Once you decide on the contractors tonight, please hold public hearings, provide site plans and renderings in the agenda packet to aid in our comment preparation. Allowing the park users to help fine-tune the designs and locations will result in the most ideal placements. If by chance no further public opportunity is offered, then tonight's agenda for items 10 and 11 was grossly ill-prepared. The orientation and design of those restrooms is of the utmost importance to us.
Commissioners, is there a motion regarding this? Commissioner Connolly?
I move that we award the McCarthy's Cove Restroom Facility Construction Project to Klaasner Construction of Marquette for an amount not to exceed $127,080, and direct the city attorney to draft the construction agreement.
Is there support for this? Commissioner Baldini?
Support.
Commissioner Connolly, discussion?
I just have a question. Apparently, this is going to be a year-round, so this will be open even in the wintertime?
Yes, it'll be a four-season facility.
So, obviously, so it doesn't freeze up, or is it going to be like a composting thing?
It will be heated in the winter.
Awesome.
Commissioner Baldini? Any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That motion passes. Next item is item number 12.
11.
I'm sorry, item number 11, sorry. Could you read that, please?
Yes, Your Honor. This is for the Harlow and Williams Park Restroom Facility Project background. The city requested competitive bids on March 13th, 2015, to construct three 320-square-foot seasonal restrooms, each at Harlow, Williams, and Presque Isle Parks. The buildings are of masonry construction with wood frame roof and timber trusses. Bids were due on April 6th, 2015. Three licensed contractors submitted bids, and based on the bids received, the estimated costs significantly exceeded the project budget. A professional service contract was previously awarded to U.P. Engineers and Architects for Design-Bill-Project Management Services. U.P. E.A. issued a post-bid addendum to eliminate Presque, the Presque Isle Park restroom from the base bid. Rationale for eliminating Presque Isle Park restroom is the, is that the park has an existing functional restroom, whereas the other two parks do not. In addition, staff submitted a change of scope request to the DNR for the grant. Revised bids were due on April 14th, 2015. The city received three bids as follows from AF Construction, Klaasner Construction, and Primo Construction. After reviewing the bids, staff recommends proceeding with awarding the bid to Primo Construction with a low bid of $276,873. Fiscal effect, the project was approved within the fiscal year 2015 capital improvement budget. The local match for the project will be funded through a general obligation bond issue. Recommendation, award the Harlow and Williams Park Restroom Facility Project to Primo Construction of Marquette, Michigan for an amount not to exceed $276,873, and direct the city attorney to draft the construction agreement, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, a motion, please. Mr. Frazier?
Make a motion to award the Harlow and Williams Park Restroom Facility Project to Primo Construction of Marquette for a amount not to exceed $276,873, and direct the city attorney to draft the construction agreement.
Thank you. Is there support? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Commissioner Frazier, any comments?
Look forward to having good restrooms or great parks.
Commissioner Reynolds? Any further comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That motion passes. Now we go to item number 12. Mr. Clerk, could you read that?
Yes, Your Honor. This is regarding approval of the release of the amended Community Master Plan draft for public comment and determine the approving body background. By requirement of the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, amendments to the Community Master Plan of a municipality must be distributed for a 42-day public comment period, as directed by the legislative body of the municipality, and subsequently, a public hearing must be held by the approving body, which may be either the Planning Commission or the City Commission. If the City Commission passes a resolution to be the approving body. During the last significant amendment in 2004, the Planning Commission was given the authority to adopt the Community Master Plan and subsequent sub-area plans. The Planning Commission completed the amending of the Community Master Plan and held a work session with the City Commission on March 31st, 2015, to review contents of the draft plan. Subsequent to that meeting, the Planning Commission voted to request that the City Commission approve the distribution of the draft Community Master Plan for a 42-day public comment period. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, approve the distribution of the amended Community Master Plan draft, and consider whether or not the City Commission wishes to assert authority over the adoption of the plan by resolution. Alternatives, do not approve the distribution of the plan, provide correspondence to the Planning Commission regarding the objections, and schedule a work session to discuss.
Thank you. I have a question before I ask for a motion. The recommendations are to, one, approve the distribution of the amended Community Master Plan draft. That would be one motion to me, and then, if we did that, I think it's inappropriate for us to, by resolution, adopt authority over this, I think that, should it be just one motion to agree to distribute it, and the resolution would come later, after the time for distribution is up, 42 days?
I think that would be appropriate, yes.
Okay. Any other thoughts on that from the city clerk or the manager?
I agree, Your Honor. No, we always put in alternatives decided by the commission, so we'll support, of course, whatever.
Well, why I ask that is it kind of looks like the recommendation is all one thing, but it's just basically the 42-day thing first, and then the resolutions would come after that 42 days. And I have one further question for clarification before a motion. If we pass this and the 42-day public comment time starts as of now, who do we do the public comment to? The planning, meaning citizens? The Planning Commission? The City Commission? City Manager? Commissioner Frazier? Who? I mean, who do they talk to?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to ask Director Stackwitz to kind of walk us through what happens next.
Thank you. Once the approval of the draft is done and it goes out, our staff already has prepared kind of a media packet that will tell the community where to and how to communicate on things. The communication goes via the planning staff, or anyone in the city for that matter, gets routed through the planning office and into the hands of the Planning Commission, so they can consider those comments in that review period. So, every, just as if anybody in the city shouldn't walk by a deficiency, anybody in the city can take comment, we'll have a mechanism to funnel it into the planning department and get it in the hands of the Planning Commission. In addition to that, the Planning Commission is talking about hitting the street, having a couple of community meetings to present the plan to the public, once it's approved for distribution as well, so we can invite people for comments on top of that.
Thank you for that. Now, with that clarification, is there a motion regarding this? Commissioner Connolly?
I move that we approve the distribution of the amended Community Master Plan draft.
Is there support? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Commissioner Connolly?
No further comment.
Commissioner Reynolds?
No, you clarified my questions. I have a few comments, nothing big, but that clarified my questions.
Commissioner Baldini?
I still have a question. So, we start a 42-day clock, we, comments come in, then what happens?
Well, let's direct that to the manager or Mr. Stackwitz.
Yeah, the Planning Commission will consider those comments and collectively decide as a body whether or not the comments need to cause some change in the draft plan, if community consensus has changed, and possibly amend the document, or not amend the document based upon their judgment and knowledge of data and facts that they've collected throughout the process.
Does that answer your question, huh?
Are you more concerned with what happens when we reach the end of 42 days and then it's still unclear who's going to adopt it?
I think that's partly it, and what if, what if we hear from the community on something, and you hear from the community on something? Do we, as a commission, say we want to change something because we're getting, we have a different reaction to proposal? I mean, and I don't even know what it is, maybe we're not going to get any comments.
Well, I think communication is the key. Again, if we can create the central clearinghouse for all the comments received in an appropriate manner, and make sure they get in the hands of the Planning Commission, that communication should allow them to pass that judgment.
Wow.
Opposed? Go ahead.
Then do we, as a commission, have to adopt this final document with all the recommended changes that you make?
The plan, what needs to be decided is who is going to be the approving body, and that at some point in time should happen before the end of the 42-day comment period, so it's clear that either the Planning Commission, when they hold their public hearing, they are compiling comments and providing a recommendation to the City Commission, who is going to approve the plan, or it's clear to the Planning Commission that they're going to make changes if necessary and be the approving body for it. But once we hit that 42 days at the end of it, and it becomes time to adopt the plan, that would be, I think that would be a good time to have a decision of where that's going to go.
No, go ahead.
Do we make?
If you don't, I will.
Sorry to sound like I'm confused, but we wait until the 42 days is up, or does the body that has, is the decision-making body, do they take on other responsibilities between now and the end of the 42 days?
No. The Planning Commission is still, is still the body that reports to the City Commission, that's going to do, roll up the sleeves, collect the comments, work with the document, and ultimately compile something at the end of it. The only remaining question is, are they recommending to you as a body that you adopt it, or do they have the authority to adopt it?
Okay. Could I follow along?
Thank you.
Who does, do we, you know, hire a hitman from out of town to do that?
No.
Who does decide? Why don't we know who's going to decide right now?
Well, you know, there's, there's two ways to look at it. If I could help with perhaps discussion on that, one, if the legislative body adopts the plan, it does show ownership in the plan. So that we trust the work of our Planning Commission, they have communicated with us, they've captured the community consensus, and, and we concur with them, and by us adopting it and putting our name on it, there's some form of ownership that's implied with that. On the other hand, sometimes it can be seen as a gift to the Planning Commission of, "You've done a good job," so on and so forth, "We concur with you, and you adopt it." And that, by no means is any opinion of mine, that is almost verbatim language from the planning book of how you're supposed to explain it to these elected bodies, right?
Well, thank you very much.
Because many, many communities do wrestle with this in Michigan, and that's, that's the two ways they go with it.
Okay. Commissioner Connesey?
Can I ask, we had a master plan in 2005, and did we have another amendment, or maybe not, but who approved it the last time? I guess.
In 2000, it was actually 2004 was the Planning Commission that had adopted the plan, and there was a resolution at that time that asserted authority to the Planning Commission, so they adopted that master plan. so they adopted that master plan. And, help me, Dave, I think there's been two sub-area plans that have been adopted since then. The South McClellan Land Area Plan and the Third Street Corridor Plan were subsequently adopted by the planning commission as amendments.
Mr. Manager, do you have any word... Opinions?
Sir, this is entirely in the purview of the commission. The 42 days when they kick off, we have, just for your clarification, internally, what it's going to look like is, as Dennis said, it's going to start the public communication process. We'll be encouraging people to take a look at the plans and potentially how their interests might weave into those. We're going to go through with one more pass from the staff standpoint to make sure it reconciles with the charter and the statutes, other plans that we have underway that may or may not be implicitly linked with the comprehensive master plan, and incorporate those along with everything else we hear from the public, and bring it back to the planning commission and perhaps the city commission, depending on how you'd like to proceed.
Commissioner Conley.
Would it be appropriate or fair, at this point, to ask the chairman of the planning commission whether they have a preferred way to go on this?
Yes, could you come up to the podium? We're going to put you on the spot here, Tyler. Say who you are and where you live and...
Taylor Clip, Chair of the Planning Commission, 300 East Crescent. Just because everybody's thanking everybody, thanks for giving me nightmares about escalators, Mr. Mayor. That was a nice way to start that deal. I don't... I think, speaking for my other planning commissioners, we don't necessarily need the gift of adopting this plan ourselves. That's... If you guys... To me, I think, and I'm not an attorney, but I think it makes sense for you guys to have ownership of doing this. My only qualm in that is... My only hesitancy in that is that adds one more step and one more round of changes that could happen to this. And we've run this thing through a lot of public comment. We're planning on doing a little bit more public comment, but we feel that it's a very good plan. It's a strong plan. We've thought it through. It's been what we've done for the last three years, and we want to hear what the public has to say, but we also feel that, you know, the less tinkering, the better. So if we can kill a step by letting you guys... By you guys deciding not to decide and have us adopting it, that sounds good to me.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Conley, any further comments? No? I have just a comment. Perhaps, we can't vote on that perhaps right now, but we could maybe direct the city manager to consider putting that on as another agenda item as to what we wish to do. We have 42 days to decide that, and the pluses and minuses, and we can decide. Okay? Is that fair enough to kind of do that? All right, I have to reorganize my thoughts here. Just one thought, for those people eager to read the master plan, this is it, okay? And it is overwhelming, but it is also an outstanding document. And it is online, so you don't have to take this home with you. It's available in the library, I think, in this form. And it is worth reading, particularly, I found... I feel like a nerd saying this, but the appendix part is extremely well-done about all different things about Marquette that you just have no idea, about the demographics and the age and neighborhoods. It is just outstanding and represents a huge amount of work on both the staff and the commission. So thank you for all your effort. And we did have a work session with lots of questions, and if people remember or wrote down those questions they have, they also... The commission should pass those comments on to the channel, so you can get it to the planning commission. So, any further comments or discussions? Commissioner Campanzi.
Yes, just while we have two planning commissioners here, I'd like to thank you for your work on this. It's daunting. It's... It's... Three. Our newest member, sorry. As of tonight. But it really is a huge task, and it is very hard, I know at times, to probably think that you're really getting the feedback from the entire community and capturing it. I don't know if you can fully do that, but I know that you've done a great job trying your best to do that. And actually, I guess my thought on whether we pass a resolution or you do, I think that I would be comfortable with you passing that and having that ownership, and us, you know, trusting the work you've done. I think that would mean a lot to me as a commissioner, just that this is your work, and you do have, you know, your powers, and certainly, it's your task to do something like this. But I think that we could certainly support it, but I do think it's your work, and I would like to see the planning commission, I guess, be the ones to take that ownership, simply because this is what you did, and I feel like we should be following and supporting your work. So, thank you.
Any further comments? I thought, hearing what she said, was if we do turn it over to you, that in and of itself is a vote of confidence in you, rather than saying, "Okay, we're going to..." You know, "We're doing what you just spoke really is a vote of confidence for the work you've done and the plan you've prepared." So, we'll deal with that perhaps at the next meeting. Okay. I'm going to call the question if there's no other comments. All those in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
That motion passes. Mr. Clerk, if you could now read item number 13, agenda item number 13.
Yes, Your Honor. This is to designate the city manager as the approving authority for tourist-oriented directional signs. Background: The city commission held a public hearing and adopted ordinance number 623, tourist-oriented directional signs, at their March 30, 2015 meeting. The ordinance provides that the city commission or their designee may be the approving authority for placement of tourist-oriented directional signs within jurisdictional boundaries of the city. Fiscal effect none. By this action, recommendation, adopt a resolution designating the city manager as the approving authority for tourist-oriented directional signs, as provided in ordinance number 623. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Is there a motion regarding this? Mr. Baldini.
I would recommend to adopt a resolution designating the city manager as the approving authority for tourist-oriented directional signs, as provided in ordinance 623.
Thank you. Is there a support? Commissioner Reynolds.
Second.
Commissioner Baldini.
Look, we've had a hearing on this, and we've had some discussions, but this is a resolution to a process that we started.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Nothing further.
Anybody else? Commissioner Campan... Campanzi?
Just one comment, and we did talk about this in agenda setting this weekend, and I guess my view, and I won't speak for other commissioners, but this clearly is a staff function, and certainly something I don't want to get in the middle of. So, it makes sense to me.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously. Next item is comments from commissioners. Commissioner Conley.
Well, I'd like to thank Lou at his last meeting with us, and wish him well. I wish you success in your projects. I wish you a boatload of fish, and a well-attended bait pile this fall. And fun traveling this coming winter, and thanks for a great job. And I know Chris is going to step in and do a great job as well. Just a couple of other items. We learned after the fact that the city became a member of the new Chamber of Commerce, and this was done behind two layers of curtains. This was done as part of the consent agenda and was part of the bills payable. I understand that we're going to have a discussion on this at the next meeting. I would rather have seen the discussion first and then joining. I think the result might have been the same, but it increases the transparency of our government if we do it the other way around. We also talk about committee vacancies and getting the list down now to a single page. We could cut it to half a page if we asked our subcommittee on committees to look at which committees are functioning. We have one, particularly the Sister City Advisory Committee, that has seven vacancies, two people still on it, and as far as I can tell, have not met this year. And I would like our subcommittee to consider looking at whether all of our committees are properly functioning and necessary. Thank you.
Commissioner Baldini.
Thank you, Your Honor. Like everyone else, Dave, I truly want to thank you. You do a superb professional job, and I dealt with Dave when I was working in previous occupation, and then on the Charter Commission. And it's the clerks of this country that really provide the integrity and leadership, whether it's the county clerk or city clerks. And I think we have a lot to be proud of, what Dave has done and what he's provided, and the guidance and tutoring he's provided for Chris, and we know she'll do the same thing. Just to comment on my colleague's subcommittee, you appointed, Your Honor, a committee of Commissioner Campana and Reynolds and myself, and we've submitted to you, too late to make this agenda, our recommendations about the committee, so I think maybe the next meeting or some other meeting. And we did provide an addendum to that to deal with suggestions on committees, but we got it in too late for this agenda, and that's not the mayor's fault or the city managers. The... I do have two questions that I heard a lot from this weekend, being out and about, and, Mr. Mayor, I'm not so sure, maybe you do want to answer them. And I think we know the answers because we've been kept advised, but the question has come up, which we heard tonight in public comment. What is the status of the road? When's it going to open? And maybe we could hear from somebody when it's on camera, so they can... The public. And secondly, what happened to all the trees on Shira's Hills? And what's happening there? And what's going on there? And people are saying, and I said, "Well, I think we know, but I didn't know, so I'm asking you, and maybe you can ask somebody on staff."
You don't want to ask them yourself?
Well, I'd be happy to.
Why don't you?
Maybe the manager... Two things. One, the status of opening the road. When? You sent us a very thorough memo, but I think the community probably wants to hear. And then, secondly, an update on all the cutting of the trees and brush on Shira's Hills.
Would you like me to do that now or save it for the...
No, why don't you answer them now?
Okay, great. Let me maybe give the... Again, thank you, Commissioner, for noting that we're keeping you informed on this issue. To give folks a little bit of a sense of what's been going on with Lake Shore, I think we've reported in past city commission meetings that part of the challenges there are because of these kind of unprecedented or once-in-a-century-type of weather events and sustainability issues with higher lake levels and things like that. There's been a tremendous amount of impact. And fortunately, in July of 2013, prior to really the worst of these onslaughts coming on, the city had taken a look at what the coastal remediation would need to be for that stretch of road. So in this particular case, we were prepared with engineering estimates, study. We've gone through multiple town hall meetings to socialize the different options for restoring the site, and came up with a design which everybody agreed to, with work that we would anticipate doing over the course of what, at that time, was expected to be related development at the Cliff's Dows site. But unfortunately, I believe it was somewhat immortal words of our engineering staff, when asked about how long the stretch of Lake Shore would survive, they said 10 years or 10 hours. We don't really have the ability to accurately predict. And unfortunately, 10 hours after that meeting is when the Lake Shore first storm came and wiped out the area. So, previously in the year, for those who've been following this, the commission had been asking us to work with a bunch of different federal and state program sources, legislators, to try to identify the funds necessary to start dealing with the Lake Shore... The stretch of Lake Shore for a permanent solution, recognizing that what we're about to kind of discuss this evening is really only just kind of a cleanup and a fix. It doesn't solve the problem, but it ensures that every storm event or every similar event is going to require the same kind of response every time into the future, and that we're looking for a more holistic way to support the issues that are going on there. So we went out last week. I took the... All of the different city departments that would have something to do with that site, the police department, the fire department, Public Works, the community development and engineers, the community service people, our finance folks and myself, and we actually walked up and down that entire stretch of Boulevard and prepared a brief kind of summary for the commission. I'll read some of the highlights here. We also took a lot of pictures, and should people be interested, we'll go ahead and post those for the public to take a look at and collect comment back. But in summary, Lake Shore suffered an extensive amount of damage. The revetment and shore cladding along the entire mile between Holly and Pine Street has been undermined and destroyed. There are many, many instances of breach. I know people can go and take a look at it themselves. There's, of course, a lot of debris littering the area, rocks, stones, trees, sand washed up and down the entire stretch. In some places, it's propping up against the fence on the west side of the bike path. So you can see where the water went into the Cliff's Dows site, receded and left some of the residue there, in the storm drains and the stormwater basins as well. If you go in there, at this point, it's still off limits. We know people are walking around in there. Please stay clear of anything that doesn't smell right. We recognize that there are multiple instances where there may be the scent, not only of previous industrial activity, but also places where the stormwater looks like it's festering. That's not something we want people to be exposed to or get into. And then there are the characteristic signs of damage with the street undermined, the road undermined. The road has open fissures in it. There's rocks spilled around everywhere. And in fact, in some cases, along the lakeside of the revetment, all of the fill material's been washed out. So you can actually almost stand at lake level down behind the remaining piles of rocks that are there. So it's not a particularly safe place, and there are a lot of different issues going on at the site. So when we looked at it last Friday, I asked the team to come up with several options. First off, we want to limit the hazards to public safety, and we don't want people going down there tripping, getting exposed to toxic substances, falling in open drainage wells, those kind of things. We don't want the site to be further damaged. We want to limit the impacts to the extent that we can to all of the ongoing environmental remediation at the Cliff's Dows site. And then we wanted to consider what options we actually have available for opening up. So if you take a completely narcissistic view and just say, "You know, what happens if we just drive it into the ground? If we can't find any resources and we just leave it as it is? What are the issues?" All the way up to not opening it because of some extraordinary set of conditions that we believe still present some kind of public danger. And so I asked folks to take a look at, using those as bounding conditions, at least three or four different options in between that would open it up for non-motorized traffic, limited motorized traffic, and so on, up until full opening. And so the issue wasn't, can we fix it in the way that we've gone out and sought all of the additional funding for? We know what that price tag is, and we know we can afford it. But given the interests of the community and given the interests of the commission and the tools available, what would it actually take to come back and open something like that up? So staff prepared some recommendations. We've just had an opportunity to take a look at them today, so these are very draft. I'd like time to sit back and actually chat with staff more about what it is we're proposing to do. But there are five different scenarios that we were taking a look at. And the first one, of course, is to take a look at the potential impact on the Cliff's Dows site. What we're seeing down there is, because of the flooding, it's changed the water tables. Because of the higher lake levels, it's changed the water tables. And there's the potential that the groundwater surface interface and all of the testing and all of the wells that we've had in there for the last 10 years have been impacted. And we're working with the MDEQ to determine if that's the case. If that is the case, what do they recommend the mitigation might be, so that we don't undo 10 years' worth of remediation efforts there on the site? We expect that that could potentially include having to replace some fill both near... We expect that that could potentially include having to replace some fill, both near the Cliff's Dows site as well on the lakeside, to make sure that we stabilize where that interface is and that it's not a floating interface. That's going to include potentially some more fill material and some cost for labor to really move that around and clean it up. Right now, the estimate for that on the top end is about $35,000, but again, I'd like some more time for us to look at that. We aren't recommending that we just drive it into the ground. That really doesn't solve any problems. So we know if people want to use it, at least for the season or at least until the next storm event, we need to consider both the non-motorized and motorized traffic. Scenario two would be to open it up with some limited repairs. So in addition to mitigating all of the soil issues and the contamination, potential contamination issues down there, we would need to repair the road where it's broken. We'd need to make sure that in the parts that we suspect might have been undermined, that we fix those. For any area where we can move the revetment, the stones back onto the pile, but not repair the revetment, we hope to do that. We'd have to compact some gravel, some shoulders and things like that, maybe put up some fencing if we need to, and control how people are using the borders along the road. So there could be some additional costs on top of that $35,000, depending on how many spots we have to fix on the road and how much fencing and signage and things we'd have to put up. Could range anywhere at this point from another $35,000 up to about $127,000. So again, we'd like some time to take a very, a little bit of time to come back with a very specific estimate. If we open the road with limited repairs and no restrictions, it's essentially going to be the same cost because we'll have to at least post for city liability for anything we know that could be a public safety hazard. And for the last one, we know that the community probably doesn't want to sacrifice being able to move along that route through the summer at least, so there'd probably be some additional cleanup that we might be able to do within house staff, getting rid of debris and gravel and things like that. But ultimately, recognizing that these are literally just kind of cleanup and stabilization costs, they don't fix any of the problems that we've observed down there in line with that engineering plan. So that cost of anywhere from $35,000 to $200,000 most certainly will happen again with the next storm like the ones that we've seen already. So at this point, we've assessed it, we've looked for non-city resources for funding. We're in the process of trying to pull together a final estimate that we can bring back to the city commission. We can do that under a variety of different ways. You could schedule a special meeting or put it on the next regular agenda, but it's something that, again, we'd like a little bit more time to flesh out, to make sure we've found the best serendipity and the best opportunity just to save money and deliver, hopefully, what the community is looking for.
Thank you. Commissioner Baldini.
Thank you. I think we should, Mr. Mayor, try and get a date where we're going to decide what we're going to do, because people are going to continue, the pressure's going to continue to ask us and what we're going to do about it. Next meeting, maybe? Okay? I mean, I don't know, the manager.
Or sooner, if they are ready, a special meeting, whichever comes first.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Now, you asked two questions. What was the?
The second question was the cutting on Shira's Hills.
Thank you, sir. Actually, that one's a little bit easier. There's two different things going on along 41 at this time. MDOT has a project for clearing the right-of-way. So if you think about the right-of-way on either side of the road being roughly the width of a lane of the highway, any work that's going on within that area is going to be MDOT managing the shoulders of the road. Anything beyond that, I know there's a big area where there's a six-acre clear cut. The property owner is out of conformance with our ordinance, he's non-compliant, he's been issued a stopped work order and at least one fine already, and we're waiting to hear from them. But it's not something that's been approved or reviewed by the city at this time.
Who are you waiting to hear from?
The property owner who's doing the clearing on his property.
And who is that?
Not at liberty to say in this meeting, sir.
This could potentially end up in a legal situation, so I'd prefer if we could kind of keep that info to a minimum.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Baldini, other questions? Good questions?
[laughter]
Well, no, no, that's not.
There were things that I heard this weekend, just out, people were asking those questions, and I thought, well, best place would be to come here and answer them.
Thank you for asking them. Commissioner Reynolds.
Well, you crossed off two of my questions, so there we go. That means I'm going to be shorter, so that's good. Last week, or was it this week? No, last week, Commissioner Combenzi, Commissioner Baldini, and myself extended the girls' state orientation, which Commissioner Combenzi is a big advocate of, and she does a great job with helping those people, and I'm thankful that I work with her here and there. But the only reason I point out that we all went, it was just fabulous that there was 14 girls and five boys, and that just tells us how many females are coming interested in politics, and I think it says something about our community as a whole. The only other two things that I have that Tom didn't already touch on was, one, in your closing comments, can you talk about the ownership bill of the Coast Guard Station? And the second one is, to Commissioner Conley's point, the Marquette Chamber of Commerce. I noticed last week that it wasn't built, two weeks ago, that it was in Bill's payable, and I was excited. The only reason I didn't particularly make a comment is because I thought, wow, great, I'm glad we're doing this. I didn't really think that we had to, you know, I'm glad, I think as a commission, it would have been nice to take ownership that we're supporting this venture, so I understand from that viewpoint, but also, for me, I was just excited to be signing on to such a great venture, so, and that is all that I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier.
Glad to see the U.P. Health System's support in our library. It's a great resource for our community. I know my daughter's used it for nine years, anywhere from book babies all the way up to, the Reading with the Dog is a great program. You know, kids these days, you can't get them to read, except for just with this tablet or watch TV, but if I mentioned she's going to read into her dog, I can't catch her fast enough to get out the door to go to the library, and she'll read two or three books to those dogs. Just a great program, so I'm happy to see they're getting back on track and hopefully keep the good work going. I also felt our trip to Duke was very informative, great, a lot of information, a lot of stuff. We made a lot of connections that I don't think we could have done via teleconference, and met with a lot of people and voiced their concerns for the community, and hope they follow through with their suggestions to go up here and make their presence known. Also, you're pointing at a lady falling down the stairs, that's the manager's fault for saying, "Our mayor's a doctor, our mayor's a doctor, he'll help you, he'll help you." So you can blame your, you can blame that on your city manager, so. Also, the Women's Center has got some stuff going on, and that's another great asset to our community for all the women in the community, so I know my mom was involved with that back in the day, so I hope they get their support they need and everything gets settled with them, so. Closing, still, the murder fundraisers are still coming up in May at the Ramada, so if you need tickets, go ahead and get them. It should be a good event. They're getting a lot of donations from original stuff from the movie, and you have a lot of lawyers competing to do all these arguments, and more of the local judges may be doing, you know, playing the judge from the movie and all kinds of stuff going on, so it's a very informative fundraiser coming up, but look forward to our actual summer, and Dave, good luck in your retirement, and hopefully we get a summer so you can enjoy some boating, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Combenzi.
Okay, I'd like to start off, just in the comments to Lake Shore, a real simple way to kind of understand what's going on with the road is, I believe in the Mining Journal they had an article, and it was the birth of a pothole. I know MDOT does a great, I mean, it's a real simple picture, but it shows you kind of how potholes and fissures and all that stuff starts in a road when it is submersion water, when it washes out underneath, and when you start to look at it that way, you can understand why staff has concern, let alone with the environmental impact this is having on us. So I guess I appreciate the attention to detail and finding the right solution, and I look forward to that, hopefully the next meeting, but if not, I think it's important that we do the right thing in this case, especially with the environmental contamination on the site. I'd like to agree with Commissioner Conley. Again, I think we would have a unanimous vote for the chamber, but was hoping to see that brought up for us to discuss. It did bring up two other line items in the base, Bill's payable. One was $3,500, and it said Commissioner Coffee. The other one was $2,500, City Manager to Tennessee, and I guess I am hoping that every ticket was not $2,500 to go down there, but hopefully I can get some details about those two line items. The fifth graders had a fundraiser tonight for Bay Cliff. We had 25 gallons of chili, 12 large, 36-by-24 sheet pans of cornbread, 60 gallons of punch water, and 112 dozen cookies, and at 6:45 PM it was almost gone, so that's why I was running in here late. It cost about $25,000 to send the fifth graders to Bay Cliff for about two and a half days, and it's one of the experiences that they absolutely love, so it was a great pleasure to be part of this fundraiser and help them put it on. Just my, a few comments about the hospital. In fairness, I feel like we've been told as a city that they wanted to break ground by spring. I feel like they've told us that, you know, we were going to have public forums, they haven't held any. I feel like we had an email sent to us, forwarded to the commissioners from the MEDC that asked Duke Life Point for the renderings before approving the Brownfield Plan, and I'm not sure if they had the renderings at that meeting downstate, but it puzzles me that we're at this point and there's only rough drafts and plans in place, because I think the city's been pretty fair. I think the city has actually gone above and beyond with all its staff to make sure that they're accommodated. And I can only point to one thing, there was a great letter to the editor in the paper this weekend, it was on Sunday, by a retired doctor, and while he gave praises to the hospital for things that they're fixing, he also cited caution in entering into this, and I think there's one thing going on that I'm not sure if it's part of the conversation, but healthcare is changing immensely right now. There are things going on that in five years or 10 years, certainly 30 years, it's going to be hard to predict what we're doing, who's paying for what, if we go to a single payer system. And I know for myself, it puts up a lot of fear about getting in too deep, especially when, again, I feel like the city has met Duke Life Point at every step of the way, and what they've told us hasn't come true. So that's my disappointment in that. Let's see here. Lastly, I guess, congratulations to Dave, it's bittersweet to have to say this, but what a job to document history and certainly what we do up here as a commission. I'm going to say it one more time, and that is that the Charter Commission will probably always be the favorite commission I've ever served on because of your leadership, but also because we had a task, and we all worked together to solve that task. I can only imagine if the Planning Commission had only the master plan to do, I'd probably feel similar, but that's not the fate of our bodies. So I'd just like to thank Dave for your integrity, your honesty, your intelligence, your compassion, your loyalty, and your perseverance. It's noted and respected, and I wish you all the best, and thank you for being a leader in our city.
Thank you. I'll just echo all the kudos and praise. Thank you, Dave, very much. Chris, welcome you, and in fairness, we gave Dave cupcakes, and I cannot bring myself to give you these tulips, so I'm going to give them to you, Chris, as a welcoming gift on behalf of the Beautification Committee and the City Commission, so you can have the flowers, and you don't have to share those, you can keep them and look at them. Okay. Tom, you asked a question about the Coast Guard, and the road and the Coast Guard are issues that really take a lot of time, and I'm going to ask the manager and first make a statement. The holdup on the Coast Guard is not with us, in my opinion, it's government bureaucracy and very slow glacial moving through the government to get it accomplished. And if I could ask the city manager now to address where that glacier slow process is right now, and that's not to diminish that it's probably not going to happen, it's just taking forever. I hope they don't. Okay, okay, I'm not going there. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, by law, the Coast Guard must turn that property over to the city, that resolution passed four years ago. It was included in the Coast Guard's Appropriation Act at that time. So since then, they've been using their environmental remediation funding to move us through that process. It started with an evaluation of the property for historical purposes, then it progressed on through an evaluation of all the potential contaminated areas. They had a field team come in two summers ago and do an evaluation using soil borings from around the site. They spent the following year doing an analysis and coming up with a proposal, potentially that they could then take through their channels and release publicly. They've gotten to the point where that process is almost complete. It's gone through the last public comment period, which is to take a look at their engineering evaluation and cost analysis for what it takes to actually mitigate all the different issues that came up through that process. They had actually contacted us on April 15th to advise that there was only one outstanding question that they wanted to have answered before they released their final EECA. We believe they've done that, and once that's been accepted, the next step then will be for them to come in and actually do the mitigation work. So if, if and when it's accepted, but it looks at this point like when it is accepted, then hopefully we might still see them this summer coming in and doing all the remediation that they have to do according to that plan, and at some point thereafter, whether it takes three months or four months or five months to get through that plan, then we can expect to start having discussions about the actual turnover.
Thank you. Appreciate your question, Tom, and the glacial speed is not to imply they're not doing their due diligence, it's just lots of different things that have to take place, and that just takes a long time. So it's not lost in, you know, the Ethernet somewhere, it's being worked on, and appreciate your concern. And the same issue with the road, I think Commissioner Baldini's question is very appropriate, but you could not answer those questions until the snow went away and the ice went away, so appreciate, it was a timely question, I appreciate that, and hopefully we'll be able to do something with it now that you've had an opportunity with the experts to look at it and make some decisions and bring it back to the commission. Thank you. I have nothing else. Do you have any other things to add, Mr. Manager?
Thank you, sir, I do, but I'd like to do something a little bit different. The clerks asked me for the beginning portion of my time for him to make a special statement.
All right.
Thank you. Sorry I didn't speak earlier up at the podium, I just didn't really know what to say. I've received, since I've given my notice, I've received all kinds of accolades for things I've accomplished and whatever, and I don't particularly look at it that way, I look at it as everybody's accomplishments. It's been through the support of each of the city commissions since I've been here, the support of all the staff, the, you know, department heads, certainly the city manager, and just great support and direction, and certainly my direct staff, and Chris has led that team up and just done a wonderful job, and I am sure she'll serve the city very, very well going forward. So it's really my turn to say thank you, and it's been just, and just to say it's been an honor and a privilege to serve this community and the commissions. I know, Dr. Coyne, you mentioned, and I didn't even think about it, that you basically have mirrored my time here since the beginning, you was on the city commission at the time that I was appointed, and then was off and then on to the Charter Commission, now back on to the city commission, so, wow, what dedication to the community, you know, it's just a rare thing, and this is just a great community to be a part of. of here as part of the management team and certainly in the clerk's office. And I don't know, I'm probably forgetting about 10,000 people that I've run into in the last nine years, but thank you so much, and I surely appreciate all the kind comments that have been made, and just thank you very much.
Thank you, Your Honor. Let me only offer, you know, we've touched on a few things of commission interest. The last one on the Chamber of Commerce really speaks to economic development, and that one, during the agenda coordination, I kind of highlighted the fact that this was an inadvertent thing. And it occurred to me that many of the things that we've been working on with the Superior Trade Zone, the Smart Zone, the LDFA, the MBRA, the DDA, a lot of these different mechanisms long predate this current set of commissioners. And so not everybody may be familiar with still a lot of the background on each one of these individual issues. The charter requires the city manager to prepare an economic development plan. That was done. It was endorsed last year. That called for and anticipated a Chamber of Commerce. We, in joining that Chamber of Commerce, actually weren't acting, and part of the confusion on this was, we weren't acting on behalf of the city necessarily in a policy role. This is something that we see and anticipate being far more closely related to what the local development finance authority is going to be responsible for, what the Smart Zone is going to be responsible for. It's actually, to a certain extent, we're trying to work ourself out of a job, having to be in those kind of positions. Because I'd mentioned just a moment ago, we've got the Superior Trade Zone, the Smart Zone, the LDFA, the MBRA, the DDA. For other nonprofit organizations that are working in the community on economic development issues, we have the Convention and Visitors Board. We now have a Chamber of Commerce. We have a program through Northern Michigan University called Invent at NMU. And when you get out beyond that and you take a look at other organizations like the LSCP or the Central Upper Peninsula Planning and Development Organization, Regional Prosperity Initiatives, and so on, there are multiple, multiple domains where these things all interact and serve different purposes. And when you stare at it all the time, it's pretty easy to keep it straight in your head, but when you don't stare at it all the time, it's probably easier to use a playbook or a roadmap to try to get a sense of how all those things fit together. So we, as part of our agenda coordination, offered, and we're going to put it on the 511 agenda to actually provide an overview of how all the, what all these things are, how they all work together, and hopefully that'll provide some clarity to what the commission then can anticipate the roles of those organizations will be and what things they should be involved in. As I said, it was purely inadvertent with Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce is supposed to be a nonprofit organization, as I understand it. We're going to invite them to come in, make their own presentation before the city commission. But it's local businessmen who are trying to work together to find a way to grow in the community. And that's fundamentally the charge of the LDFA and the Smart Zone. That's what they're supposed to do. They're either supposed to help people with great ideas come in and start those and create businesses in the community, or they're supposed to take businesses that have great ideas and want to grow to that next level. And the kind of people that you would see on the Chamber of Commerce would be exactly the same kind of people you would expect to see on the Smart Zone Board. And in fact, I think a couple of the people who the Chamber of Commerce has announced are potential candidates for their board actually have already also been tentatively identified as Smart Zone Board members. So I'll make sure to include those little details in the presentation when I make it on the 11th. But again, it was inadvertent. Our perspective was not that we were asking the chamber to, or the, excuse me, to ask the city to come into the chamber. In fact, we also made the statement, set the agenda, that, you know, the LDFA and the Smart Zone have not yet had their TIF approved, they have not yet implemented their structures, they have not yet appointed their board members. And there are a lot of these organizations that are moving very fast, and in order to keep the momentum, we routinely kind of step in and help coordinate things and then work on the transitions as these organizations move forward. So if there truly is a policy discussion on Chamber of Commerce, we'll gladly tee it up, and if the city would like to take that on as a direct task, we'll gladly, we'll gladly put that on the agenda. But that, in this particular case, wasn't what our intention was. But I promise when, on the 511, we'll come in and explain how all these things kind of work together, to help the commission get a sense of which belly buttons we think you'll be pushing for different things in the future.
Okay.
And with that, Your Honor, I don't have anything for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave, for your comments, and thank you, commissioners, for a good meeting. We're adjourned. Thank you.